Good evening, we'll call the meeting back to order again. I'll open with a closed session report from our city attorney, Mr. David Alshire. Mr. Alshire?
Yes, council agent in closed session. Items listed on the agenda for the agency real property negotiations concerning VIP Motors. We gave a status report, no action was taken. Negotiations concerning the dump site Gabay property. We gave a status report, no action was taken. For the city, the item involving Desert Water Agency was not discussed. The item involving Walter Family Partnership was not discussed. The 115 acres north of Tramview Road gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure litigation, we discussed two cases, no action was taken. We did not discuss initiation of litigation.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Alshire. We'll turn now to public comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the entities. Anyone wishing to address the council during public comments, please come forward at this time. If you'll come forward, there's two chairs here and some microphones. David, maybe you can move some of that material so these two young ladies could have a seat. If you'll both give us your names. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Aren't you a homecoming princess?
Yeah, I am.
Once you push the little button on the bottom and the actually green light comes on.
That's it.
There you go, now you're live.
Okay, I'm Cecilia Lavareca, and I'm ASB Vice President, and this is...
I'm Chasten Wangard, and I'm ASB Secretary.
And tonight, we just came in behalf of Palm Springs Association Student Body to recognize Will Kleinings, for the founder of the parade. We just wanted to thank him for all the support and commitment he has given the community for all these 10 years, and for the support he's given to Palm Springs High School, especially the seniors with the float and everything. And we just want to show our appreciation tonight.
And thank you for that vision you gave us 10 years ago.
And in behalf of Palm Springs High School, we got you a plaque to recognize you.
You want me to read it?
Okay, it says, "In tribute to the founder of the parade, Will Kleinings, thank you for the vision you had 10 years ago. It has been a great success and experience for everyone in the community. Dedicated to October 22nd, 2003, Palm Springs Homecoming Parade 10th Anniversary."
Bravo.
Thank you.
That was very nice. Should pass it down. All right, there you go. Today was, in fact, the 10th anniversary of the Homecoming Parade. It was very well attended, as those of you who were there saw. Anyone else wishing to address council during public comments? Good evening, gentlemen. If you'll give your name to the clerk, welcome.
My name is Rick Leeson, Director of Sales at the Riviera Resort, Palm Springs.
Ed Pollard, General Manager, Ramada Resort Conference Center.
First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for bringing over your memorabilia for our Palm Springs weekend, and I was the one that found your 45 record the next morning that was lost, so...
Thank you. Tough to find that song in Japanese, you know.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Everyone was talking about going on eBay, and we knew there'd be no way we'd find it. So, I'm here tonight in place of Ed Sweetech, who's actually making sales calls in Kansas City. We thought it was important to come and just ask for your consideration in sponsoring the Senior Softball World Series, a program which we've hosted here in the city two other previous years, in 1995 and 1998. And we just wanted to ask your consideration of sponsoring this again monetarily, and this is outlined in the letter, which I hope you received via fax, with the third page, which was left out the last time Mr. Sweetech was here. We were asking for consideration, your support from the city.
And from the Ramada's standpoint, we're pledging our support to this monetarily, and we hope that you consider it, and any action you take, we appreciate.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments?
Mike Kovalev, Palm Springs POA President. Just came here tonight to publicly acknowledge the fine job my comrades, chief, and the command staff did this weekend. Friday afternoon, we had about 300 biker gang members coming into town who were involved in an active gang war. The last few cities that have had a biker event have had stabbing, shootings, et cetera. We took control from the outset. The biker gangs came to town, stayed in their hotel, and on Sunday, they left. They never got on their bike during the time they were here. Has this been in the press? No, it hasn't. I thought it was a fine job by a department who some council candidates believe is top-heavy, overpaid, and needs to be revamped. I'm proud of all my cohorts, the chief, and especially Commander Michael, and for you for having the faith in your police department for doing this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Please come forward. Very good, seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll turn to council comments, questions, or reports. Council? City manager comments, follow-up requests? Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are just a few matters I would like to bring up this evening. One, number four, the agreement with tourism. We are going to ask to remove that from the agenda this evening. Ms. Ford has had a family emergency, so she was not able to be with us this evening. We will reschedule this for the first study session in November.
Okay.
The second question is, our next study session scheduled would be the 29th. It's actually a fifth study session, I'm sorry, a third study session in October. The question to council is if you would like us to prepare an agenda and go forward, or if you would like us to wait and not have the third meeting this month and go bring the next one back in November. Is there a direction, please?
I absolutely want the meeting.
Okay, very well. I hear one.
That's right. I've got to get all the meetings in I can.
Could I support that?
All right, then we'll meet next week?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, then if Ms. Ford is available for next week's agenda, we will reconvene at then. And finally, I would just like to note that on Monday, and this is a very important date, Monday, the 27th, this coming up Monday, two Mondays, at Atlas Restaurant, they will be hosting a farewell party, but not so long, to Jeannie Reller Spurgeon for her some 12 years of service to the city as a city councilwoman. And the only thing that is required to bring is laughter and fond wishes. And that party begins at 7:00 PM, and it will last as long as Jeannie...
Laughs and has good wishes. Is it preceded by a closed session?
I know.
All right, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Will our study session next week be preceded by a closed session?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Ready?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Let's turn to our study session topics then. First item is presentations on Back to Black contest winners. Mr. Ready, this is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This was an idea of several of our city employees. Given the fact that we have some significant financial challenges, they came up with an idea called Back to Black, in essence, getting us out of the red and back to the black ink. And what they had done is they had invited every city employee to submit suggestions that would save the city money, earn the city money, or make us save it in ways of doing things that are more efficiently. We had 136 submissions, and we have 31 winners out of that 136. But there was the top category of three winners, and those winners are here this evening, and we would like to recognize them. And before we do, let me tell you just a little bit about what this program is going to do. We had about a two-month period for them to give ideas, and then we had a ceremony at City Hall to give the awards, and actually Ron Oden and the mayor were both at that ceremony, and it was actually a nice affair. And what I need to do is thank a few people. Maureen Fox and Jan Tress Scott, and Barb Elge and Carrie Stevens in the Executive Services Unit. Basically, they picked the ball up on this thing, and they carried it, and made sure that it went off well. And also like to thank Tom Canar, who actually went through 136 of these, and he narrowed them down, and then Sue Mills, Troy and myself, and with Tom, we've picked the final winners. And with that, I would like to present certificates to the three winners. They're here with us this evening, and if I could ask them to come forward, please? And we have Lola Getz, and Dirk Voss, and Susan Gardino. And what I'd like Tom Canar to come up real quick and explain what these three winners' suggestions were.
Do you have copies of that?
We tried to pick categories that we thought were most relevant, and I'll start with Lola Getz, because I remember what she did, and she works for me. Lola works in business license, and noticed that we had not been collecting the full amount of business license tax on people who are leasing businesses. And it's just part of her job, but saying, you know, this is something that we need to start picking up, and we chose that one as being the most expedient of the winners. So, thank you. Dirk has an idea that I think has got the possibility of raising a significant amount of money. And David, could I have those for a moment, please? I need to get the details on it. Thank you.
Rename the stadium?
Naming rights to various city properties, and this will be a policy decision on the part of council, of course, but we think it could be something that, if you take seriously, that could raise significant amounts of money. I mean, you know, if Edison International can become Edison Field in Anaheim, then maybe we can put a name on our skate park or some of those other places. And so for Dirk, he came up with the most, I think, the largest dollar amount, or potential dollar amount, that we might have. And Susan Gardino? Susan, I'm sorry. Could you refresh my memory on the idea?
Oh, my idea was to ask anyone who has contracts with the city, including consultants, to rebid their contract.
This was one of my favorites, because then I got to talk to Dave Alshire about his contract, but... And he was very receptive to that, I have to say, too. But I think it was really an excellent idea, where people, we can go out to the folks that we do have contracts with and say, look, we're facing some tough times in the future, the state is, of course, and some of that's going to devolve onto the cities and onto us, and ask the people that we do business with to maybe share in some of that pain. So, thank you all, to all three of you, for the contest and for your submissions, and to everyone else that submitted.
Okay, now the award. Hold on. Now the award.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I would like to make a comment before we get into our other budget items, and that is, I would also like to publicly thank the chief and the police department for the exceptional job that they did this past weekend. I attended the event, and at different times, sometimes in the morning, afternoon, and evening, but I think the thing that I found the most impressive was talking to people from other agencies, other law enforcement agencies, who said that the job that our police force and the direction of Gary Ginger that they did was simply exceptional. And when leaders from other cities and other agencies give that kind of compliment to your law enforcement officers, I think that that is exceptional. I'd just like to say a special thank you to them.
Very good. Let's turn now to our quarterly budget review. Mr. Ready, your first item is the fiscal year 2003, 2004 budget status report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, but if I could backtrack just for a moment, I neglected to mention that there's over 26 individuals and businesses who contributed prizes that we could give away at our Back to Black, and so we would like to thank all of those individuals and businesses as well. All right, on to the budget. This is our quarterly budget update. Council had requested that each quarter, we give you an update on where we are and where we are headed. Tonight's presentation is going to consist of three areas. The current fiscal year that we're in, which is '03-'04, and then also, based on that, we're able to peer into next year's, which is '04-'05, and finally, we will have a discussion on the golf course fund. As you know, that's a fund that has been in trouble for some time, and we have an update on that as well. Tom Canar is going to give this presentation, but before we do, in a nutshell, I would just like to give you a couple numbers. We will plan to end this fiscal year with a deficit of approximately $465,000. If you remember, we were going to end this deficit this year with a deficit of $1 million, which city council had agreed to take out of fund balance. I'm pleased to announce to you that the things that we have done have really helped to mitigate this deficit. So, instead of a million, it will be roughly $480,000. Now, I would note that if the state of California had not have taken away that $500,000 in vehicle license backfill, in essence, we would have had a balanced budget this year. However, that's the good news. What's going to happen, which Tom will explain in detail, we've been able to look into next year, and as you know, we have to look far down the road to make these course corrections as quickly as we can. The fiscal year of '04-'05 is expected to have approximately a $3.8 million deficit. And Tom will explain the specific reasons for that. However, I need to note a proviso, and a very important proviso. That $3.8 million deficit could raise an additional $1.8 million deficit on top, if in fact, the governor-elect takes away our vehicle license. So, that is a variable that we have to be prepared and be ready for, but right now, the current budget figure for a deficit will be 3.8. And with that, I would like to turn over to Tom and begin the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As Mr. Ready stated, what we're going to be going over is the first quarter of '03-'04, and of course, as always, I caution the council that the first quarter, especially in Palm Springs, July, August, and September, is not necessarily all that relevant to where we're going to end up in the fiscal year. We see some trends, but you have to take a lot of this with a large grain of salt. I'm also going to talk about, just really briefly, about the prior fiscal year, and where we ended up with that, because that has relevance to where our cash balance is. If you look on page one, and the report that the council's looking at, there are copies in the audience, I left on one of the chairs back there. If there's anybody that needs one, please feel free to grab one of those. We ended up last fiscal year, at least with the estimate I have now, unless the auditors make some adjustments to it, with a deficit in the operating funds of about $330,000. You may recall that at the, I believe it was, May 30th budget session, or one right around there, where we discussed where we thought we were going to be in the current fiscal year. I think the estimate was something like a deficit of $362,000. So, we're very close to where that ended up. As Mr. Ready said, the revised estimate of where I think we were going to be in the current fiscal year is a deficit of $465,000. If you take a look at page two, it tells you what effect that has on our cash balances. The adjusted cash balance beginning of the fiscal year, last fiscal year, at July 1st of 2002, was slightly more than $8.1 million. With the deficit that we had of approximately $330,000, that leaves not quite $7.8 million in operating fund reserves. So, we're down a little bit from where we started the year. If, in fact, the estimates that I have in here for the current year hold true, we'll end up the year, this fiscal year, on June 30th of 2004, at about $7.3 million in operating fund reserves. One very big proviso on that, or caveat on that, is that these numbers include $3.7 million of monies that have been advanced for the Convention Center Phase II expansion. So, this presumes that we were going to take that money from the bond issue, and that the general fund would be reimbursed from that. We paid for cash for the Phase I expansion, essentially. That was about $3.3 million. That was out of current collections, but the balance of it, and we haven't spent all of those dollars right now, but they're encumbered, or they're appropriated for that purpose, and so they're out of the cash balance. And if for some reason, the Convention Center bond issue didn't go forward, the general fund cash balances would be reduced by whatever we had spent up to that date. Major changes on page three of what happened in fiscal '03-'04 since we adopted the budget, it's all on the revenue side. I've increased the estimate on the property taxes from $11,775,000 to $12 million with the continued building, the continued increase in housing and commercial prices, or commercial building prices. I think that's a reasonable estimate. I think we should get to $12 million fairly easily, but that's an increase of $225,000. Unfortunately, transient occupancy tax is not trending the same way. We finished last year with about $12.4 million in collections, and we had put in the budget $13.4 million for the current fiscal year. I don't believe, at this point, the trends show that we're going to hit that much. I build in a small increase from last fiscal year, but a large decrease from the budget estimate, estimating that we'll collect $12.6 million in the current fiscal year. And the motor vehicle license fee, the city manager touched on that. We lost what's called a backfill amount for the first three months of this fiscal year. So, it took the current governor, Governor Gray, until, when he signed the trigger that increased the vehicle license tax, didn't go into effect until October. So, the state said, "We're not going to pay you the backfill amount for the first three months." It basically means they paid us less money than would have been due otherwise, about $500,000 for that three-month period. We have a promise from the state that this would be repaid by August of 2006, but I'm not banking on it. So, we'll accrue it as a deferred revenue, or as an expected revenue in some future year, but with an offset as an uncollectible account, just to make sure. So, if we get it, it'll be great, but at this point, it is not in our calculations as part of our funding sources for the out-years. We're going to have some lease revenue from the recent deal that we did with Iago Calientes related to the Prairie Schooner parcel. That will create general fund revenue for the current fiscal year, because it starts in October, of about $325,000, and that's all new revenue. We didn't have that in the budget when we adopted it. The big story, I suppose, is the increase in all of the building and plan check and other kinds of development-related fees, and this is all volume. This is not including fee increases, because we haven't addressed those yet. New development tax, I looked at the numbers just a couple of days ago, or through a couple of days ago, and we were at almost the budget estimate for the entire fiscal year. We're almost at $300,000. And I'm estimating that that's going to go up by the time we're done with this fiscal year, up to $900,000, an increase of $600,000 over what we had on the budget. So, that goes a long way towards helping us solve our problem. Building permits trending up the same way, and also plan check fees. And at this point, just from what's in the pipeline and in planning, from the planning department, and they're collecting plan check fees, those ought to translate into building permit fees, and eventually into additional property taxes, at least for two years out, I would say, at a minimum, even if, unless everything just dried up almost immediately. It would pretty much keep us going for a couple of years at this level. So, all of those things together helped reduce our total deficit from the original million dollars, and a little bit more, down to about $465,000.
Tom, on item two, TOT, you've got us dropping $800,000. The 12.6 you've got for revised estimate, does that take into account anything to do with the potential passage of Measure I?
No.
So, Measure I would increase that number?
Yes, it would.
The 5, 6, and 7, the new development, the building permits fees, and the plan check fees, these do not represent the increases in fees we're proposing to offset the new costs associated with new employees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Page four gives you some more detail about what happened, or what we expect to happen in the current fiscal years, and I won't go through the details on that unless there's some specific questions. There really are no changes that we've done so far in either transfers in or out, or appropriations. All those numbers are still the same as were in the original adopted budget.
I guess the only question I have, Tom, under line six, under motor vehicle licensing fees, the discussion has been we've lost a half a million dollars, and we could lose another 1.8. Would that be the extent of our loss, or is there a potential we could lose all of it?
Well, I suppose there's a potential that if they eliminated the car tax completely, at this point, they were talking about just reducing it back to the level it had been at before. The total loss is $1.8 million. They've already taken $500,000 away from the current fiscal year, so it could be another 1.3 million this fiscal year. Next year, since, if the governor does nothing, or if the legislature does nothing about the car tax, and it stays at the same level, or if they do something with the car tax, but the state still continues to provide us with backfill, it'll be back up to the $2.7 million figure. What would be at risk out of that $2.7 million is most likely an additional 1.8, if at some point, the car tax is reduced and the state doesn't backfill the amounts. So, I guess to answer your question, the risk in both years is a loss of about 1.8 million from wherever we thought we were going to be, right?
Okay.
And could they take it all away? I hope not, but it's probably possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Next year, since, if the governor does nothing, or if the legislature does nothing about the car tax, and it stays at the same level, or if they do something with the car tax, but the state still continues to provide us with backfill, it'll be back up to the $2.7 million figure. What would be at risk out of that $2.7 million is most likely an additional 1.8, if at some point, the car tax is reduced and the state doesn't backfill the amounts. So, I guess, if, to answer your question, the risk in both years is a loss of about 1.8 million from wherever we thought we were going to be, right?
Okay.
And could they take it all away? I hope not, but it's probably possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Page five lists all other revenue, and I cover the major changes that we had there, but that just gives you the category that says "all other revenue" to give you a little bit more detail about what's includeable in there. Page six talks about, it takes the current estimates that we have in the budget, or for the budget for fiscal year '03-'04, and projects them out into fiscal year '04-'05. We know a number of things are going to happen. We're not going to have the transfers in, or most of them, that we have this fiscal year, because those are fund balances that we've transferred to the general fund. We'll use them up, they'll be gone. It's unlikely that there will be additional savings in those funds next year, or in the current year, to be able to transfer for another year. All we'll have is the gas tax fund, which provides an annual $600,000 transfer to the general fund. We expect some increases in revenue, the, matter of fact, it might be simpler to turn to page seven, where I have the major ones. Property tax, I expect to go up about 7.9%, up to $12 million for '04-'05. The motor vehicle license fees, well, it depends what happens there. That's one that's kind of up in the air right now. We have an agreement with Iago Caliente on the Spa Casino that would kick in one year from the opening date of the casino, and they have a payment that they'll be making to us. It starts at $100,000 per year, and so that would be a new revenue source. As I said, all the transfers, or most of all the transfers in are going away. The problem is, and there's one major transfer out, we'll have to start paying the debt service on the parking structure, that's essentially general funded from savings that we made from, or had from a prior refinancing of the convention center, but it'll be a new cost, as far as the books are concerned, of about $300,000 a year to pay for that debt service. The major changes are on the appropriation side. I cranked in a 2% increase on wages. That basically is what the contracts call for, for both the general unit and for the management unit, and I just extended that to all the other units, the police and fire safety units. Obviously, those contracts are up for negotiations, the latter ones, and they will, whatever is negotiated out, will have an effect on that number. The PERS cost is the single biggest thing that is going up. We just did get the rates about three or four days ago, late last week. And the cost of PERS is going to go from somewhere around $4 million in fiscal '03-'04 to about $7,376,000, an increase of about $3.4 million next fiscal year. Everything else staying equal, unless there's changes in pay rates, or some other positions are eliminated, or something else happens, that's what the costs are going to be. Health insurance, we're expecting about a 12% increase, and that's another substantial, almost a half a million dollars. And workers' compensation is increasing, we think, at a rate of about 10% per year. The PERS rates, and then on page eight, show you a chart, and perhaps we can put that up on the screen for the viewers at home, gives you a history of where the rates were for the various units that we have. We have three separate plans with PERS for our pension, for all of our employees. We have one for the police safety folks, for the fire safety, and for everyone else who's defined as PERS, as miscellaneous. So, that's everybody who's not a police officer or firefighter. And you can see that the rates went from, in fiscal '02-'03, from relatively low levels, and in fact, some of these, we weren't even paying, because we were super funded.
When was the last year we were?
I'm sorry?
When was the last year that we were super funded?
In fiscal '02-'03.
Okay.
And those rates have all risen dramatically. From the rates there, where you can see miscellaneous was 8%, fire was 9%, and the police were a little under 17%, to the projections for next fiscal year, respectively, 25%, 46%, and 46%, and a little bit more.
How do you estimate that?
Is my mic on?
Yes. My light is on. How do you anticipate that rate before negotiations?
The rate that is on it, that's a rate that is calculated by PERS, by CalPERS, and they do an actuarial study of each unit, and take into account the total number of people in the unit. They project pay raises, they project years of service, remaining years of service, ages of the participants, try to guess how much they're going to earn on their investments, and all of that flows down to a dollar amount that we need to contribute to PERS to pay for both current retirees, people who are, left the city already, and to put enough aside for future benefits, and essentially divide that by what they think our payroll is going to be, and say, "Here's your rate. This is what it is." So, if we substantially reduced our pay, cut in half the payroll somehow, the rates would have to go up, because there still would be some fair amount of component of cost in there that you'd have to cover.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not really an estimate that I do, it's given to us by CalPERS.
Okay. Thanks.
The components of those rates are almost, or the largest part of them anyway, are due to market adjustments. When PERS was calculating what they were going to earn on their investments a few years ago, they were, they normally projected out an 8.5% return on their money. And of course, for several years there, they did much better than that. Reduced the city's cost, and most cities' cost, to zero for a lot of their employees' plans. Unfortunately, they didn't do so well. We're two years behind, or there's two years lag time between their market performance and what happens to our PERS rates, or any city's PERS rates in California. So, we're now, last year, or the year we're in right now, experienced a substantial increase in PERS rates. Next year, we'll increase a even more substantial increase in PERS rates, because of what happened in fiscal '01 and '02. I think by the time we get into fiscal, we get into fiscal '05-'06, those will be based on the, all the market conditions that were in effect as of June 30, 2003, and the performance will be in. I think we'll start to ameliorate this. It should at least not grow anymore, not get any worse than this. I would guess that it would probably start to come down some, because I think they'll start to make better returns on their money than they're even projecting. But for right now, we've got a problem covering the cost. I put in here, to switch gears, if there's no questions on PERS, or any of those kinds of costs. On hotel average daily rate, you can see the first chart there, and '03-'04 is in red. And I think in each instance of, so far, for July, August, and September, and the September numbers are an estimate on my part, I based them on some of the returns that we have in so far, and some information I get from the larger hotels. So, that's probably going to change a little bit, but it looks like it's trending up a little bit compared to where it was last year, or the year before. So, we're doing better on an average daily rate. Occupancy rates are kind of in the middle. We're doing better than two years ago, but not quite as good as last year. The rates are down a little bit, still very close. And again, it's July, August, and September, and the levels of occupancy and the rates are so low, they don't have that dramatic of an impact on our total eventual collections. The last thing I'd like to talk about on page 12, are the fundings, or is the performance of the Takwitz Creek Resort Course. I've summarized the statements of profit or loss for the last three fiscal years, and the budget for the current fiscal year. You can see that in fiscal '01, we made a net profit, operation, operating profit of about $72,000. In '01-'02, oh, well, there's a typo. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for that. That's a net loss of about $50,000, not a profit of $3.8 million, unfortunately. Missed it by a little bit.
Just by a little.
There should be a negative sign in front of that expenditures. And then in fiscal '02-'03, we ended up with a net profit of about $103,000. Projection for the current year is $144,000. And you can see it trending up a little bit on the rounds played, from $38,685, gradually increasing, and the budget, it seems fairly reasonable to me, of estimated rounds for the current fiscal year, of $42,768. We're not doing quite so well, if you look at the comparison for the first quarter only, but it was a very slow quarter. The weather during the summer was pretty horrendous, I think, for playing golf, and impacted the number of rounds. Again, I don't have the September numbers, so I just kind of plugged in, I have July and August, and plugged in an estimate for September. But it looks like we're doing a little better than '01-'02, but not as well as we did in last fiscal year. We're hopeful that turns around. As Scott Michael says, this is a couple of good days in February, so, and we're covered from back where we were. Just to let you know where we are on an analysis of the golf course fund, and remember, there's, of course, there's two golf courses, there's the municipal course, or the Legends course, rather, that is leased to Arnold Palmer Golf Management, and the Resort Course. Now, the Resort Course is, if it makes a profit or a loss, that's all the cities, to our benefit or to our detriment. For the municipal, or the Legends course, since it's leased to Arnold Palmer, they take the risk on profit or loss there. We just get a fixed annual lease rental, plus a percentage of the gross over $2 million. Those two courses combined provide the funding for the golf course fund. So, we see where we have a net profit from the Resort Course, estimated of $145,000. The lease revenue from the Legends Course of about $400,000. Interest income and some miscellaneous income of about $74,000. And the transfers from the general fund, basically a subsidy from the general fund to cover the difference here, of $600,000. That gets you to about $1.2 million total funds available. We spend that on, a little bit, $67,000 on contract administration, $18,000 on insurance, $47,000 on contingency, and the biggest single thing, of course, is the debt service, $1,086,000. Again, coming up to the same number. So, that's where the $600,000 is necessary to be transferred from the general fund to the golf course fund to cover the difference.
Mr. Mayor?
Sarah L. Spurges.
What's the comparison between the play on the two courses?
The play on the Resort Course, you know, if you hang on a second, I'll get you that. It's pretty close. This is a calendar year report, but the play on the Legends Course was $44,548 last calendar year. So, it's running about the same as the Resort Course.
Same as the Resort?
A couple of thousand rounds higher.
And what's the comparison as far as what they charge?
I don't know what the fee schedule is on the Resort. Perhaps Scott could answer that?
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. To, I have a fee structure here that will, hopefully, it's not too complicated, but this actually shows the fees for the Resort Course and the Legends Golf Course. Wait till that gets around. And it extrapolates a comparison between the other local valley municipal golf courses. To the right is the Resort and the Legend Course, and we show what the resident fee is, and what the, basically, what the rack rate is throughout the course of the year. And the Legend Course, the Palmer Course, the leased property, is about 40% less, I think is a good, Tom may correct me on that, as we go, throughout the course of the year. And one of the reasons that we have a few more rounds on the Legend Course versus the Resort Course is because we are able to have nine-hole rounds, and those nine-hole rounds are equivalent rounds. And so, you're always going to trend a little bit higher on the Legend Course, even if you, because we're not able to have nine-hole play on the Resort Course, because of the configuration of the golf course. You can't start on number 10, because it's a mile from the clubhouse. I think one of the things that the revenue comparison will show you, or the rate comparison, is that the courses in the East Valley, at least the Desert Willow Golf Course, is substantially higher in their rate charges compared to what Takwitz is. And I think that one of the things that's mentioned in your next presentation is to take a look at revenues and rate adjustments. And we haven't had a rate adjustment for residents and/or the full rates out at Takwitz in the last couple of years. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we were suffering financially, but we had a very low annual rounds. We were down into 30,000 rounds, and our goal has been to build that up into the 40,000 rounds per year range, which we're now approaching, so that we don't lose a client base. And we're now at that point where I believe we can raise our rates to start covering our shortfalls for the coming fiscal year.
Am I imagining that when we did the golf course many years ago, and our projections, weren't they around 50,000? Was that not?
There were, one of our consultants came in and told us that we could get an estimate of 50,000 to 52,000 rounds per year. And we honestly have not achieved that.
I see that.
It's extremely difficult to get that, because, you know, you're maxed out during the season, essentially January through the first part of May, and it's the shoulder seasons is where you're going to pick up those rounds, to get you to that $50,000, or 50,000 rounds per year. As they build more golf courses in the valley, and you can play golf in the summer season now for some $10 a round, it's just extremely competitive. And to pick up those eight, maybe 10,000 rounds per year, that's where you have to do it, is in the competitive shoulder seasons, either in the fall or through the summer, because you really can't get more people than we do get on a daily basis on the golf course during the winter.
Well, when I look at this, the Desert Willows and the Golf Course in Indian Wells, both in those times that you're talking, charge significantly more than we do. Do you know how their rounds are?
Their rounds, they are not as busy as we are on a daily basis during the season. So, it's a difficult game to play, really, in all honesty, about the number of rounds versus your annual revenue. And when you, just because I've kind of been here so long, I kind of know the history of the golf course for a few years, every time we've raised rates, we've seen a corresponding drop in our annual rounds. And so, the touchy part is that you don't raise rates too high to throw too much play to another facility, but that you raise them enough to where the offset in the lower number of rounds, you still retain a higher revenue. And I believe, by looking at our numbers going into this year, I think we can adjust our rates somewhere in the 10% to 20% range, and still not lose a substantial amount of annual rounds, and still be yet competitive in the market. And I think these numbers show that, too.
I'm sure that grass seed and everything else goes up.
It's, well, grass seed's a commodity. You know, it kind of goes up and down, but it is up over what it was a few years ago, and so is water and electricity and everything else. You know, the golf course, their wages and benefits and all of that have risen, just like every other municipality or employer. Workers' comp, too.
Thank you, Scott.
One of the factors on the golf course at Indian Wells is you've got two hotels on site, and that generates play. I think Troy could acknowledge that from his history of Indian Wells. We're working on a hotel development on site, which we hope will positively impact rounds of play at Takwitz Creek, but currently, we don't have that. The Desert Willows, they've got timeshares, I think is what they've got, timeshare, so you've got some inherent players that come, part of the package, part of the arrangements and their reservations. I am pleased to see the numbers up, at least in rounds. It's a big chase, though. The idea of the 50, 52,000, I remember those numbers early on, and the idea of 1,000 rounds a week, if you will, on the average, is somewhat unrealistic. Yeah, especially after what we've seen. But the numbers are up. Scott is right, though, you raise the price... You raise the price too high, you start losing players. And our competition's not just here in the valley, it's actually in the past, it's everywhere. So many golf opportunities now, it's amazing, which you can play anywhere at reasonable rates. Need more golfers.
The good news is, is we're past the 40,000 rounds per year threshold, which is really where we needed to get a couple of years ago.
Very good. Any more questions for Scott? Mr. Mills.
Scott, what is the qualification requirement for resident versus regular? How's that done?
To apply for a resident card, you have to be a resident of the city of Palm Springs. And the criteria that the council policy is, is you have to have a voter registration and/or a driver's license with a Palm Springs street address on it. That ensures that you pay taxes within the community year-round. No other form of identification qualifies. And currently, we have, give or take, about 400 discount people or discount cards active at any given time.
Do you know how that compares to, I don't know if Indian Wells has a resident card, but I know Desert Willow does.
I think Indian Wells extends theirs to any resident within the community. I'm not certain if they require an identification system, but I don't believe as many people participate in Indian Wells as we do have in Palm Springs. However, the city of Palm Desert, a few years ago, had a very liberal criteria for their resident cards, and they were inundated with them. And ended up having to change that back to a more restrictive policy because they had a lot of snowbirds, really, is what were getting their resident cards, so. But I really have no idea as to how many they have. I do know it's quite a bit more than us. About a year ago, when we were having a similar discussion at the council, I think it was around 1,100.
Wow.
But it's over twice what we have.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
How do we issue those cards? Is it calendar year?
Yes, ma'am. It's calendar year, and you can come over to the leisure center, I believe, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we'll issue you one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Tom, any more on your report, sir?
Yes, sir.
Any comments you want to make?
Council, questions or comments you want to make before we go on to our next item on the agenda? We'll get our budget task force findings.
I only have one question on this piece here. Inasmuch as we see the trends developing this far out in the first quarter, what is the recommendation of the City Manager's Office for changing or modifying our budget in the next quarter? Do we make any amendments at this time? Anything you want to recommend to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. One of the reasons why we looked out into oh-four, oh-five, and oh-five and oh-six is so that, you know, we have the ability to act well in advance because, as you can appreciate, you know, it's like trying to turn a cruise ship around. It takes some time, and you've got to get started and get the right radius. So what I would suggest is the following. We're going to hear in a few minutes recommendations from the Budget Task Force. Certainly, some of those recommendations may be valid and things that you would endorse and give me direction to pursue. That's one possibility. Second of all, Troy and I today sat down with a process, with a vendor that deals processes of grants, and is very impressive, and we're going to be tremendously more aggressive on the grant side of the equation. Third, we will continue to have attrited positions in our organization. And obviously, during our personnel review committee, each week we sit down and we review every position that comes and goes in this organization. And I suspect we're going to be doing a lot less replacing of positions as we move throughout the year. So those three things will get us started. We'll see where our revenues actually are in the next quarter, and if the picture has not improved, or we know more about what the governor-elect is going to do, if the picture's not good, getting worse, then we'll take more drastic action at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Additional comments or questions? Tom, can I get you to turn to page six on a couple of things under appropriations?
Sure.
Under line 26 of the CVA, you've got a growth in there of 3%, but your TOT on line two is at 4%. Is there a reason why one would trend at a different rate?
The, yeah, the CVA is a percentage, varying percentage, of group meeting hotels compared to non-group meeting hotels. And actually, probably the 1.1 million is a little bit overstated. We probably won't pay them that much this year because the marquee was closed and that was a group meeting hotel. And it just depends on the mix between the, how much business goes through the group meeting hotels. They get a larger percentage. They get 1.4% of the total amount of TOT collected at those hotels compared to 0.6% at the other hotels. So, yeah, it can vary from the overall TOT projection.
Above that on utilities, you've got us flatlined across the next three fiscal years. You see no increase at all in utility costs?
I think that the, a lot of the Edison costs are going to go down. It will probably be offset somewhat by increases in gas and electric.
Natural gas, yeah.
Well, natural gas, we know pretty much what that's going to be, so that's already built into the budget.
Do you have long-term buys on that, our contracts? How long are our contracts?
I think it started August. One year.
It's a one year?
Yeah.
Thank you, Troy.
And, you know, depending on what happens the year after that, obviously. But I think the electricity costs, the part of electricity that we have in our budget that we have to buy from Edison will go down from where it's been in the last year or so.
The two above that, insurance, health insurance and others, under 23 and 24, workers' comp, are these anticipated growths on an annual basis, 12% and 10% respectively? This is just what's going to be happening into the future?
Well, they're just guesses on my part, Mr. Mayor. It's actually probably lower than some of the historical trends. Actually, the employees are picking up a larger portion of the health insurance cost in the current fiscal year, and I expect that that trend is going to continue. We're hoping that the total costs hold 12%.
What's our annual growth been looking like on revenue side, percentage-wise, roughly speaking? Four percent?
It's hard to calculate because we've had increases in TOT rates and things like that. I mean, I can give you specifics.
Just a general number.
On property taxes, they've been going up about 7.5%, 8% the last three or four years. I'd guess on all the revenues, if you take out the TOT rate increase, because that really does distort it, probably about 4% a year.
So things that are above the 4% line should be a concern because we can't catch up?
On the expense side, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Got some pretty hefty spikes in some of these categories.
And all of those presume that we have current staffing levels and current pay structures and so forth.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Council, any other questions on the financial report at this time? Okay. Mr. Eddy, where are you taking us?
To number D, requests for community assistance funding. Members of council, I have two requests that...
Thank you, Tom.
One was requested to be here today, and then there was one other that we were going to turn down, but since this was agendized, I thought it would be best to run both of them by you. The first one that we will be addressing is the one that's attached to your agenda, and that's the request from the Riviera for the Senior Softball Championships. Their request is for approximately $37,000. And that is for the event that is coming up this year. Now, as you can see on the estimated revenue that will produce for the city, according to the Riviera's projections, is about $47,000. Now, actually, I would request if Tom could come up and give you his read and view on what this event could produce for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Riviera is proposing that we co-sponsor, I guess would be the proper term, the Senior Softball World Series, that would be here in September of 2004. They're requesting, or the promoter is requesting, a total of $50,000 in up from cash dollars to assist with various expenses and six round-trip tickets. And they have some pledges already from the Riviera and some other hotels. I think they total about $20,000. So we're somewhere $20,000 plus perhaps the expenses of the six tickets, so whatever that would cost and wherever they're coming from. The Riviera, or the sales department of the Riviera put together the letter that you see there and with some of the results. I think actually they're probably being fairly cautious in their estimations. I took the same numbers and figured if they had 150 teams with 15 players, and that some of those players brought additional guests, the total number of visitors had to be about 3,800. If they stayed an average of four room nights, or four nights in a hotel, and there was a couple of people per room, you know, taking into account, some people are going to be from local teams, some are going to stay in hotels that aren't in Palm Springs, you take all of that out, we'd end up with about 5,600 room nights. And I think if you take a look at the information they provided from the prior years, they didn't have a full set of reports from all the hotels where people had stayed at. So I think 5,600 room nights is probably a fairly reasonable estimate. You start with that number, and it's pretty easy. Take an average daily rate, I took a fairly conservative one of $70, average retail spending per person of $110, and you add all those things together, you come up with an economic benefit to the city of Palm Springs of about $2.1 million and a tax benefit to the city of about $62,000, at a cost of about $30,000 or somewhere around there, perhaps a bit more. So that's what it would cost if that's all it cost to bring it. We did a similar, or I did a similar report to council, actually, in 19, or in 2000. And at that time, I think they were coming in and asking for about $130,000 or somewhere along those lines. And, you know, it was at best, even if you got fairly liberal in the interpretations, a push to the city in terms of tax collections, obviously a benefit to the community and additional business. This time, if it's a $30,000 price tag, it might be something council might want to consider.
And we denied that last time.
That's correct.
Tom, what's the actual room nights that you're projecting here?
On the last page there, I think I showed that, expected room nights of 5,637.
Council, what's your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Tom, is there any way to better monitor this for future concerns? I mean, if we're looking at doing it again, you notice that, I mean, obviously there are some hotels that are going, I mean, some hotels that are getting room nights. Is it because, I mean, we're seeing these room nights because these are part of the package, essentially that they, that is put out by the organization? And that's how they monitor these? And we don't really know of people who just make a phone call to a hotel?
I think these numbers were gathered, actually, by the marketing department of the Riviera Hotel. So they called the other hotels and found out. One way, though, would be to put the onus on reporting or accountability on the promoter, saying, okay, we're giving you $30,000. You figure out a way to report to us how many room nights this event created and report back to us. We get something like that from the Easter Bowl tennis tournament. And that's a little easier because it's headquartered in the Riviera Hotel, so almost all the room nights are right there, and they're pretty easy to count. This one would be a little harder to do, but, you know, maybe with some kind of a promotional effort, you know, turn this ticket into your hotel and get a $5 gift certificate or something like that, I don't know. You know, I think there would be ways to track that. But I think the easiest way would be to put it on the promoter because the people would be scattered all over the place, and it would be hard to have any one hotel or anybody, either in tourism or myself, really gather the information.
I mean, certainly, I mean, there's a check-in process that happens at all these events, and, you know, just if the question's even asked, you know, where are you staying? You know, I mean, it'd be pretty easy to do. That might be a way to do it. Because the, the event in the past has been a good event. I've attended a couple of these, in fact, just last month in Vegas, we did one, so. But, and they are well-attended, and I would say probably, you know, half the people, you probably average one and a half people per participant. But, you know, then you've got, you know, you have the RV population you've got that you can't really track. But, I mean, it's a worthwhile event, I feel. I do think, though, that if there's a better way to keep tabs on it, we can, we can really start to understand what it does. I think your idea is probably a good one. I think it's nice to see it down to a number that's a little bit better than it was the last time we saw it. I'm intrigued, and are there, are the, the 2,000, I mean, the $2 million revenue, that is retail sales tax, is that what you were projecting in there?
That's total hotel sales, room sales and retail sales together.
Okay. Okay.
This is not your report, though. This is the...
The very last page of it, I don't know if you've got copies of it, Mr. Mayor?
I don't think I've got the right one. No, I don't have that page. Oh. Can you make copies of the rest? Do you guys have this one?
No.
Why don't you generate some copies of that? And we'll work off of that a little bit, because I'm working off of the requests from the hoteliers, and some of the numbers we're hearing, I can't seem to locate them, Mr. Oden can't seem to locate them either on the report, because we don't have that page. Get some copies of that, that'd be great. Do you guys have thoughts at this point? Questions?
Well, I'd definitely like to pursue it. We're talking about 2004 here, is that right?
Yes.
What are we looking at as far as their schedule in order to, what's their drop-dead date for this?
I don't have the details on that. I just kind of ran some of the financial numbers on that. Mr. Mills, I'm not sure what their schedule is in terms of when they need to know from us, a commitment or not.
Is it, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I mean, it is a good event. It's a good event for the city from a PR standpoint, if nothing else. I mean, you're talking to people that, you're dealing with people that come here to play tournaments, they'll come again to play tournaments, not just this one, if they had a good experience, and I would think that they would have a good experience. So it's more than just this tournament. I know that the rec department runs a very good operation, and they generate a lot of interest when they, when they do have a tournament, even if my team doesn't always win. And Vicky could set my schedule up a little better if she worked at it, too. But I would, I would like to pursue it to the next step if the rest of the council agrees. And that would be a suggestion, as Tom mentioned, to, to the promoter to come back and give us an idea of how he could detail the information a little bit for us from a tracking standpoint.
This is scheduled for when? April? September? Mr. Oden?
Since we're meeting next week, you could have that preliminary information that Chris just requested for us next week?
The information, I'm sorry, about the drop-dead dates and things like that?
Yes.
I think probably that would be best coming from recreation, but we could pass the request on to them, sure.
Okay, they're saying yes. Okay. I'd be comfortable with looking at it, as long as we could get that information. Okay, I'd be comfortable with looking at it as long as we could get that information.
The request is for $37,000. Is that right? I guess the concern I have is that everything we generate in the TOT category seems to be going to the promotion of the event, which means that the city generates revenue on sales only because you're not going to get any TOT collection because you're making that contribution towards it. And whether you want to say you're attributing your TOT collection towards it or a similar number, and it just comes in the general fund, it's your call, just a spending when you want. But the reality is it's, it's as though you take the 37,000 and the six airline tickets or whatever comes out to, I don't know what the cost is, and that's your contribution towards the event. And what I don't know, if that makes sense, then it seems as though we should give away our TOT every time we get a chance because we're only going to make money off of sales. And we rely heavily, in fact, Tom's most recent numbers indicated our TOT collections are down in projection. And to give away probably the greatest revenue generation we have so we can pick it up on a sales tax, I just need someone to justify how we can tip the scale in that fashion. Because if it makes sense and the model works, then I suggest you we just, every day, we give away our TOT because we're going to make it up on sales. So the model has to be somewhat different than what I'm seeing right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think I agree with that. I think if you look at the time of year that we are looking at here, it's pretty much a shoulder season for us based on what we've seen. And I think, you know, it's an opportunity, I think, to, to boost the numbers at that time of year. It's not like these hotel rooms would be going to other guests and we're not getting the revenue. I think, I mean, I can see the logic of it for this time of year.
What's the total contribution from the hotels and other business partners and the city of Palm Springs towards this event?
Currently, they're giving $12,000 of the initial upfront money that's required. How many hotel rooms they're giving out, they have not indicated, if any. But obviously, they probably have a lower daily rate.
I guess I'm concerned that if you use just for the purposes of academic discussion for modeling, we get 10%, 11%, 12% and a half percent on TOT. So that for every dollar that the hotel makes, we get 10 cents. And we're supposed to give all of our 10 cents towards the event. And their dollar is only giving a third of what we're giving. And yet they're generating, you know, 10 times as much money or more. So I'm just trying to figure out where the parity is based on the partnership. Well, based on the TOT collection projection and at $45,000, we're asked to give 37 in cash plus some airline tickets, which comes with a price.
The airline tickets are part of the 37,000, Mayor. Or that will be part of their in-kind. It was represented to me that our part would be 37, we would not have to deal with the airplane tickets.
Okay. I think that's too much. I don't know what to recommend, but I think 45 is too much to contribute towards this. 37. I think that's just, I think in the partnership, we're paying, you know, 75% of the contribution towards that cost. And I need to see a better example of a partnership besides a 2575. I appreciate the idea of the shoulder based on Tom's most recent report this afternoon. Looks as though we can use some business in this November, no question about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Might I suggest perhaps the spearhead for this, which I assume is the Riviera, that perhaps they see if they can get some additional buy-in from some of the hotels that might benefit more for this, or I mean, from the event and maybe perhaps work on that number a little bit. And I, I mean, I don't know if they've tried to do that or not, but it might be worth seeing what, what, what they could generate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Part of my discomfort with this request, I'm not comfortable buying anyone tickets to come here, period. I mean, just that request, I just don't think is appropriate. If we're going to assist with some in-kind in some way to help the program, that's different. But when we get a request to help people to come here to put on an event, that's, I believe it's inappropriate. So if we're going to look at this, I would ask that they would look at some ways in which we could assist with the event that might not necessarily be in cash. Or definitely reduce that and find ways of seeing if we can get some additional buy-in from other hotels.
What's our in-kind contribution? Fields, field preps, staffing?
They have not requested for any, any...
Are we charging full fees for use of fields?
Yes, we would be. So that is certainly something that we could bring to the table.
All right, what's the council's pleasure? Directions you want to give?
Mr. Mayor, I might mention that we have a, we have a, we have an extended stay now too that was not here before. And I think that might be worth pursuing that hotel as well and to see if there's any buy-in out of them as well.
Okay. Other direction, questions? Is there a dollar amount you feel comfortable in directing? More comprehensive report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say more comprehensive report. We've made some recommendations. I think by the time they receive that information and come back to us, then I think we can see more clearly how we want to contribute and the amount. Or if we do.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ready?
What I could do, I certainly could go back to Mr. Svetek at the Riviera and ask him to get more buy-in from other of the stakeholders in the hoteliers field and come back to you with a lesser amount. And also, we'll have the amounts of in-kind of what potentially we could do with the fees.
Okay.
And I'll try and have that back on the next, next week's study session. Thank you.
Okay. Let's look at this RSVP piece before we...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this was a letter addressed to the city council. It was requesting buying a table for their luncheon of $1,000. They claim that their value that they provide to the city last year in payroll was approximately 872,000 of their volunteers doing service to various seniors and organizations in our community. Their request was to buy a luncheon table at $1,000 and the letter was addressed to you and that's why I brought it here this evening. Thank you.
This is their annual awards and recognition luncheon. Is this a ten-top? Is that what this is? Is this several, series of tables? What is this? Is it one table?
It's one table.
For our volunteers? Okay. It's the council's pleasure on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I think that, you know, I think they're absolutely right when they look to discuss the value of the volunteers from our city each year and the savings that this means to our community. And they've made this request before and I think that it's a worthwhile investment.
Okay.
I think we stopped giving them community block grant money, didn't we? They used to request...
I don't know if we gave them CDBG. Haven't seen it on their list for a long time.
It's been a long time.
You're going to get a request, as I think I indicated in prior meetings, from the senior living inspiration luncheon. It's a $2,500 contribution towards the table for the recipients and ourselves and help offset some of the costs. So this is in keeping with that kind of same, same request. For what you get, what you've received in volunteer services, I think it's a, it's a simple enough request for $1,000. I don't have a problem with it. I'm going to bring it forward from my standpoint. It's the council.
Okay.
Bring it forward. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, let's take a little recess and we'll come back and maybe you can set up the budget task force while we take a quick recess. Thank you.[1228.65] For what you get, what you've received in volunteer services, I think it's a, it's a simple enough request for a thousand dollars. I don't have a problem with it. I'm going to bring it forward to my standpoint. It's counsel.
Okay.
Bring it forward. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, let's take a little recess and we'll come back and maybe you can set up the budget task force while we take a quick recess. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're going to now have a budget task force report and its findings. Mr. Ready?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, some time ago you had appointed a budget task force to assist us in the challenge of defining new revenues and cutting expenses. We've been meeting for the last, John, help me.
Eight months.
Eight months, six months.
Six months.
Once a week generally, and we have a committee that you've appointed. They created subcommittees with the chairman and they are here this evening to present to you their recommendations. And I would like to introduce to you the chairman, Mr. John Stiles, and he will introduce the rest of his, his members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As David said, we have spent considerable, considerable amount of time on the budget process and the parts of the budget and I think it has been well worthwhile. I would commend Tom Knar and Troy, who have been very helpful in this process because I think there was a lot of tough questions and, and the responses were always positive and helpful and we moved through the process and I think it's been very beneficial. Before we get into the program, I think it's interesting, Tom Mulhall cut this out and it's a thing from the Wall Street Journal that indicates that the city of Pittsburgh debt rating had been, has been reduced to junk status by S and P. And the primary reason is, is rising healthcare costs and an underfunded pension plan. And that kind of sounds familiar and so these issues need to be dealt with as we move forward or we, we get into more serious problems as we move, move on.
Familiar, but we don't have that jump on radio, I don't think.
Well, and I don't think we want to get there.
That's clear.
I think when we started this process, the instructions were to think outside the box and I think we have tried to do that. Unfortunately, I think it's made some city employees nervous and the fact that we have reviewed all the departments, asked a lot of questions, had a lot of thoughts. The point of this report is basically recommendations, we're not a decision-making body. And so we bring that to you for future consideration and dealing with, with the budget issues. In the report, there are three sections on, on three, we formed three subcommittee reports. Two of those reports were approved by the whole, by the whole task force to come forward to the city council. The third report was not approved to come forward and is included in, in the report as a discussion item. And the reason it was not approved is, is that unfortunately that subcommittee chairman was out of town. We couldn't get some answers. There's still good issues in there to talk about and it was more important to include it so that we had those on the table because we're not sure how we move forward beyond this report and how this budget task force would be constituted in the future. So it's included so that we can carry those ideas forward. And I think at this point, Troy, why don't we just go ahead and start with our budget task force report? And we will go through these, I think, fairly quickly so that we can deal with questions and answers. And, and as David said, I'm the chairman. We had three subcommittee members, Sharon Locke with employee benefits, Tom Mulhall on contract services, and Ginny Foad on revenue enhancement. And there, and when we get to their parts of this report, they're going to take over and, and make the presentation. Our task force members and, and I would like to introduce those who are here tonight. Lynn Bouchard, Truman Gates, Mike McCullough, and Steve Nichols are with us. Stand up, just stand up. Thank you. The rest of our, our group was included Howard Lappam, Paul Matson, and Alan Reichel. The task force was established by the city council. There are 11 members composed of that and basically over the last six months, we've done our work, we've generated the reports, and as I said earlier, we've had significant assistance from the staff. Could not have done that without staff. We formed three subcommittees because after we met for about two months, once a week, and we're getting into all the issues, we found out that it was an overwhelming task and agreed to divide it down so that we could, we make some process, progress and then bring it back. I think what we have in, at least in two of these reports are consensus-based recommendations for both the city council and the citizens of Palm Springs. Our suggestions under purpose is just that, that we're looking at long-term budget security. Once we got through the, the current year fiscal issues, our, our goal was to really focus on what happens in 2004, 2005. We've, we've made some specific recommendations that we think would help reduce or eliminate future deficits. One of the issues that I think was, has really been kind of a continuing theme as, as we've learned on this, is the fact that, that this budget task force really needs to stay in place to continue to study the issues and probably be utilized by the city council as a resource because I think collectively, this task force has been a, really become an expert on the budget because that's all we've had to do. And, and so there are opinions and, and very honestly varying opinions. This was not 11 people agreeing on every issue. It was well discussed and pounded out in some cases. So I think it, I think it, that recommendation really needs strong considerations. I think in our general findings, we've talked about our budget concerns are real. The employee-related expenditures alone will outpace revenues, revenues if nothing changes. And the complexity of the budget really indicates that there is, is, it's a continuing learning curve and I think the council can benefit from a budget task force. One of our general findings and just as I pointed out a minute ago, we're not alone. This is really a widespread, spread problem and that's another good reason to maintain the task force. Some of the key recommendations that you'll get into is, is that we're recommending employee participation in benefit plan costs, participation in CalPERS, and solicitation of bids for services to determine cost effectiveness in police, fire, and legal. That does not mean we want to replace anybody, but I think if you're going to look at budget items, you need to have something for a cost comparison issue. And that's why those recommendations come forward. And I think now I will turn it over to Sharon Locke, who chaired our subcommittee on employee benefits. Sharon?
Thank you and good evening. Before we start, I guess with the numbers, because you're all inundated with numbers anyway tonight, I'd like to tell you how we approached this. We, we analyzed what we were doing in our city. We looked at other cities and what they were doing and we realized these are all negotiated items. And so what we did is not just one single thing, but we have quantified different plans so that people can look at those when you're moving forward toward those negotiations. We considered health benefits first because obviously that, that is the biggest item in cities and in companies today, as we well know, if you try to go to the grocery store. So we looked at our benefits of what we're paying, which is on one of the exhibits. We looked at the different units and what they were doing. And one of the things that we found out is that you have several different plans. You have one for management, you have one for general, and you have one for public safety. And within those, there are several plans, like the cafeteria stand, plan. We looked at cafeteria plan and we noticed the other thing that was consistent was the fact that we have single, single plus one in families, which we truly as a group came to a consensus saying that is not equal pay for equal jobs. If you're a family, you're making anywhere from three to $500 more a month for the same job. So we looked at everything, we quantified most of the results and we said, all right, if we go to a true cafeteria plan, which we say, we will give you X number of dollars, you pick out the disability you want, you pick out the health plan you want for you and your family or your spouse, and you pick out the dental and vision. We looked at different amounts for the employees and if we go to this cafeteria plan, we can save anywhere from 250 to $750,000 a year. That depends on if you choose to try to negotiate for $600 a month or 650 or for 700. And in looking at the plans we have, between 650 and 7 would easily take in an HMO, take in vision, or even take in some PPOs for one person and a partner. So we as a group said, all right, that it should be our recommendation, but by the same token, if you do some other things, say that you negotiate to put everybody in the city on the cafeteria plan, the savings would be over $300,000 a year. If you negotiate it to put everybody on the HMO, that would also be a savings of over $300,000 a year. The thing about being consistent between all, all unions and all contracts is that down the road, it's going to give you more negotiation to make better, actually get better benefits and less rate to the city for payment. So that was our recommendation when we came to health, which was really the most difficult for us because of all the different contracts and all the different things that cities are doing. And the recommendation we came up with the cafeteria plan with the one amount, if you go back to your appendix, you'll see several cities embrace that. So anything that, that we're putting forward, we found other cities that were doing the same thing. We then looked at CalPERS and said, well, obviously this is one of our largest problems. And we're looking at just during a period, if we could negotiate in the contracts that while we're not being super funded, that we would make a contribution of 2% or 4%. There's an additional savings of $500,000 to a, a million dollars a year. And again, what we're doing is we're planning a menu-type option so that when contract negotiations can come up, it's kind of a mix and match thing. Well, if we can't get this, maybe we can do that. The next item that we looked at was retirements. Our contracts are pretty good for retiree health and we said, all right, you know, everyone is reducing those benefits. And we looked at what would happen if we, over a five-year period with a 10% reduction, would move that retirement benefit towards the 50% amount. First year would be 28,000 and we would work ourselves up to 140,000, adjust for the current retirees and the current situation we're having. We're also recommending that perhaps with the new contracts or as contracts permit, that you keep retiree benefits at 50%. Then we looked at the short, at, at the leave plans. Now, in the two contracts that you negotiated in the current year, there was a cap of 712 hours and a cap of 440 hours, which again, when we're looking at it in other cities, is this is really the correct way to go. So we're looking at, well, 11 weeks, which would be 440 hours, would be a cap. But then, then the discussions began and it's like, well, what about those catastrophic events? And what about when people retire? That's really where we have a problem with termination, when they've got 2,000 hours. So in order to be fair to the taxpayer, try to be fair to the employee, we're saying, well, why don't we think outside the box and do something different? Create a short-term and a long-term account. In other words, cap a short-term account at 440 hours. This is what you have, this is what you can take with you, and if you terminate or retire, that's the amount you get. But at the same time, create a long-term account that you can accrue anything over the 440 hours, up to 2,000 if you want. You have a catastrophic event in your family, you can now draw on that catastrophic class of leave. So we thought, well, that sounded good to us and, and we finally came to a consensus after a lot of discussion. Then we got into the next set of recommendations, which really aren't around benefits, but around those things that surround benefits and negotiation. The first thing that, that we were thinking about is that what we have now is we have all the memorandums of understanding of the contracts are negotiated by a team of employees. And in looking at this, it seems to us we're setting up a conflict of interest. Today I'm your boss, today I'm your friend, you know, tomorrow I'm saying, hey, you know, you're only going to get 11 weeks of, of pay in your, in your leave account. We'd really like to see that the direction of, of this council go to the fact that what you do is you create a team of, of management people that will support with information. Then we have a specialized consultant, not a negotiator. We found several example of these people. We found several examples of these people for hire, that are experts in certain areas, and they come in to bring that piece in along with the staff, to say, alright, these are the things that obviously this unit needs, this is my specialty, and this is what you need to understand. And with that, what you do is you, you appoint non-employees, as deemed by each and every one of you, and give those people the direction and the policy of where you want these negotiations to go. We, we really believe that we'd get better negotiations, we would eliminate the conflict of interest that exists for, for people within City Hall, and probably come up with some more thinking outside the box in negotiations. Finally, we looked at the current staffing levels, and if that slide is up, we have 30 employees at $115,000 in benefits and in salary. For our staff of a little over 400, which, 450? Okay, it was 419, and this is what they kept saying, this is a snapshot as of this day when you're doing it, so we're 450 now. What we're saying that is, perhaps what we, we need to do, what they've done in other companies, we need to flatten the organization. And, and that doesn't mean layoffs, you do it by attrition, you do it by retirement, but what you have is a, a two and a five and a seven-year plan in how you're going to accomplish that. We think that's a very important piece. Where are we here? And the other piece that we thought is that right now, what we have is, we, we have, again, with this conflict of interest, we have people negotiating contracts for, say, the maps unit, and what they're doing is actually, I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, don't ever, don't ever think that, but what they're doing, again, is a conflict of interest for them. I'm negotiating a contract with you, Jenny, and what happens is, I'm going to get what I negotiate with you. So we're thinking there should be a separate, separate negotiation, or it should be individual for any of those EX employees, which, again, what we're trying to do is eliminate the conflict of interest that we have in City Hall. You know, and finally, I, what we were requesting, well, that was the final, that was it, so. What we came up with then will be employee benefits, future change, challenges, and if you look at the first two items, survey brokers for competitive insurance plans and reasonable limits on health plan options. What we're saying is, if we look at the cafeteria plan, we have options after option after option. If we can, if we can limit the number of plans we have, and we can get consistency across all of the units, what will happen is, we can negotiate with carriers for more competitive rates, which will mean lower rates for the city and probably better benefits for the people that are going to take that insurance. We need to review workman's compensation effects, I think Tom reviewed some of that, but I think that's still going to go up, and that's our general opinion, it may escalate in future years. We're looking at PERS participation. Cap on contribution maybe for current employees as we negotiate, say, we, we will pay, and other cities have done, and we'll pay up to 12%, but if it gets over 12%, then obviously, you're going to have to pay some of that as well. One of the articles and some of the things that we've run across in other cities is that actually, cities are opting out of CalPERS. When they have new employees coming into the state that have never been in CalPERS, they're saying, whoa, wait a minute, maybe we need to do something else. So that's a move afoot that's out there among the cities. The thing that probably, that we need to look at is, when we have a hiring freeze, we generally discussed it and said, we need to do step and column freezes at the same time. In other words, if you're putting in a freeze, you put in a freeze for everything until you can just kind of back off and take a look at where we're going and what we need. And, and then you can re-initiate step or column freezes, when you take that hiring freeze off. But if you're freezing, it should be frozen, and it should be frozen across the board. And the last thing that was probably the most important for all of us is that we're all in a change of time. Every city that we've looked at is facing the same problems we are. They're facing renegotiating contracts, even though contracts aren't up, they're looking at pension benefits, contributions, and what's going to be important for the next two years is that we keep abreast with whatever city's doing, because we don't want to be outpaced someplace, but we don't want to be underpaced. We want to be right there with where cities that are comparable to our, us are going. So that, I believe, concludes my part of it. John told me to rush through it, I tried. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to thank the people who are on my task force. I'd like to thank Steve Nichols, he was very, very helpful, and also Paul Madsen. We had the task where we were reviewing the fire department, the city attorney, we would have reviewed the police department, but we did not have time to do that. I'd like to thank David Elshire, he was very, very helpful in giving us lots of information. And I also would like to thank Barry Fried, and I know that Police Chief Gene Runwood would have been just as helpful too. Ours is a rather interesting area, because not only are we looking at the money which we spend, but those areas can also cost the city if we make the wrong decisions. For instance, in the exhibit one, which was put out by the fire department, they said to evaluate the services which they provide, we have to look at both the quantity and the quality of the fire department. The exact same thing is with the city attorney. The city attorney does cost us money, but at the same time, a very good city attorney is going to be saving us money by keeping us out of litigation, also by their knowledge. You can't go just by what is the city attorney going to be billing us on their hourly basis, because one attorney may need five hours to complete a job, where a very experienced attorney may only need one or two hours to complete that job. So quality is very, very important in this area. What was very, very helpful in our talking with the, and I'm going to go with the fire department first, very helpful in talking with Mr. Fried, is that he came up with a number of suggestions that definitely can save our, save us money. In the number of years past, he talked about consolidating the dispatch with the other cities. Right now, we're all, in the whole Coachella Valley, we're all faced with the budget shortfalls. Each individual city is doing the dispatching, why not here in the Coachella Valley have one area where you do the dispatch, you can be a lot more organized, you don't have to worry about the border areas, where there should be City Cathedral City, Palm Springs with the 991, 911 calls. He definitely felt that that would be a very, very good area for us to investigate. Another area for us to investigate is flattening the organization. Right now, 12 of the fire department employees at the captain level are higher, with their salary in PERS, it's $151,000 per year that they're earning. We have 51 first responders right now. The decision before you is to determine, do we need the people at the top level, do we need more first responders? That is one of the areas where we definitely can save money, or at the same time, you have to look at, is the quality issue more important? And quality indeed may be more important in that area, and we decide not to flatten the organization. That is, that is for you folks to decide on, or to ask us to investigate more. Another major area is the ambulance transport. Right now, we are not allowed to transport patients to the hospitals. Cathedral City, which for instance was grandfather, is allowed to transport patients, they are allowed to build, build insurance companies, they are allowed to bill Medicare. That is a major area where they can make the money. At present, we have to have a separate ambulance company, AMR, come out here to transport the patients. It is our understanding that there's county law right now which prohibits us from transporting patients, and we should determine whether it's within our best interest to lobby to have that law changed, because not only does it affect Palm Springs, but affects a lot of the other cities here in the Coachella Valley. The fire trucks, which we have right now, can be retrofitted to transport patients to the hospital, where we can recoup some of the money from having the EMS services which we're providing. Coming up with EMS, that is the major area of our fire department, which we're spending the money on right now. For instance, we had 6,100 calls last year, of those 4,100 were EMS calls. That's roughly 72% of our calls were EMS, and those calls are increasing. We have a very, very active fire department, use an example comparing us to Cathedral City, which is very similar in size and population. Cathedral City only had 4,100 calls compared to our 62, 6,100 calls, and this would just as our population ages, just increase on the EMS services. So again, you folks have to decide about that quality issue, are assets being allocated properly? Should we be having, for instance, more paramedic trucks versus less fire trucks? That's the area which should be investigated. One of the areas which we norm, which we discussed about is RFPs, the Request for Proposal. Right now, for instance, the city Palm Desert does use the county for their fire department. Is that going to be an area which is going to be saving us money? Our initial investigation was that the current budget for our fire department is $7.4 million, which means it's approximately $171 per capita for every citizen here in Palm Springs. By comparison, the Cove communities, they're spending $11.1 million, which is $181 per capita, and there are the communities that are using the county. With the RFP, what is very good is the departments will have to analyze what their cost areas are, at the same time, we'll be having the county will be coming with suggestions for what their savings recommendations would be, and it's always a very, just like you awarded that young woman tonight, for saying we should have all the outside contractors have their contracts renewed, the exact same thing is, we should evaluate our city employees, are we getting the best bang for the dollar which we're investing? You may find that indeed, we are getting the best bang for the dollar, and then that way, you can be very, very happy knowing we're doing the best possible. Moving along to the city attorney. Again, Mr. Elshire was very, very helpful, and Mr. Elshire definitely has suggested, although it will again be time-consuming, is putting together RFP for the city attorney. We have found, I'm friends with John Pinkney, who last year was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, John was the president the year before, who works at Best, Best &amp; Krieger, which has a number of the cities they provide legal services for. He provided me with information, that's in one of the exhibits here, of what their billing fees are for those cities. Now, it is important to point out that those are not the full billing fees, that there'll be other firms that will be involved, this is just Best, Best &amp; Krieger's. We've done a request for public information for the complete total billing fees from those cities, we've not received the full information yet, but that just gives you a perspective. With that request for proposal, we can see, are indeed, we gain the best value for the city attorney's area. At the same time, when we go through it with the request for proposal, or even if we don't do it, we can consider things such as, should we be having contracting out on a paralegal to do a lot of the work which we're presently having our attorney fee, our attorney do? You can have the paralegal reporting directly to somebody at City Hall, reporting directly to whoever the city attorney is, but there is a lot of work which is being done right now, which may not need the skills of a, a very experienced attorney. Another area is to research the costs and the benefit of having an in-house attorney. Presently, our city attorney is here two days a week, and do we find that it's better for us to have an attorney who is here five days a week to provide services and needs for whenever we have things that are involved when our present attorney is unavailable, or is a two-day-a-week sufficient? Again, it's your determination, you can also determine whether that attorney who would be here reports directly to a overall outside contractor, such as Mr. Elshire's firm, or again, reports directly to the city manager. As we're mentioning about the quality issues with the city attorney, the other thing which you definitely have to keep in mind is, we have to maintain that business and resident-friendly approach to having the city attorney. We indeed may find, again, that we get a city attorney who will be a little bit less money than what we're presently paying for, but if we find that it puts so many of our projects behind the ball, behind the timeframe, it makes it very, very difficult business-wise, then it's all penny-wise but palm foolish. So there's some good areas where we could save some money, and Mr. Elshire has had a number of suggestions, such as the paralegal, and if you folks have questions, you know, just feel free to ask me.
Why don't we go ahead with Jenny and, and...
You're going to go into...
No. Just be.
Good evening. It's important for me to explain the process of the Revenue Enhancement Subcommittee. When we began working as a subcommittee with sometime in June, we realized that we would have to take a lot of steps. The other two committees had a more narrow and focused area in which to concentrate, and we were given the charge of looking at everything possible in the world that could bring additional revenue into the city. So that's, that's a pretty broad job. We were, we took as our first step to identifying the possible areas of revenue enhancement that have been used in other cities in California, and, and we have not even begun to look at other states, because other states are also facing the same problems as we are in California. And our second step was going to be review our budget, to see if we were using those avenues, and if we were, if we were using them to their fullest potential. And the step three was to work in partnership with the city staff to fully evaluate all forms of revenue enhancement and the methods that would be appropriate for Palm Springs. Additionally, the committee agreed that you couldn't look at just enhancing revenue without looking at cutting costs, and we overlapped with several of the, with the other two committees, and we did pass on our, our fire department information to, to Tom's committee. When we began our work, we anticipated that we would have a year to finish our task as outlined, so I want to make sure everyone understands that this is a preliminary status report, and this is by no means a final presentation to the city council of our report. We looked at several different, and I'm just going to go through, because I know you have an explanation in your report of the things that we did look at. We looked at franchise fees, and we, as a charter city, can charge over the 2% limit, and we, we, in, in all of these fees, we've, we've looked at what additional revenue they could bring into a city. We have not had the opportunity to move into what is our city doing with these fees, and how, and can they be increased, or if they are increased, will we still remain competitive in, in certain areas? So we looked at franchise fees, we looked at the leisure services fees, and we didn't particularly, we looked particularly at, at things like the golf course, and talked a little bit about the, how many, how few people, it sounds like a lot of people, but there's very few people that know about the resident card, and sponsoring golf events at our golf course, and, and things like that that could promote our leisure services more that we don't think that we're doing. We of course talked about building and permit fees, and we currently have a, a study, the city has a study going on regarding those fees. We also talked about rental fees, because we have an awful lot of short-term rentals in the city. People who have homes and condos that they rent out for two days, three days a week. In some cases, that causes some havoc in the neighborhoods, and, but what it also is, is that the city is being cheated out of the TOT tax on those rentals. We've come up with a couple of suggestions on, on how to monitor that, and saw it as a, as another source of revenue. We also talked about business license fees, not increasing those fees, but, but ways to ensure compliance, so that all the businesses that were operating in our city were licensed. We were also asked by the EDC to look at the, a real estate transfer fee, which was charged currently by the county, and many cities also tack on their own real estate transfer fee, that's when you're selling a piece of real estate, there is a county transfer tax that's put on to that property. A small percentage could also be added on as a city fee and collected through the county. The, we reviewed, we, we're in the process of reviewing fees on city-owned properties, and are we getting a fair share of fees from the properties that the city owns? And we... And we also talked extensively about an admissions tax, and you have a report on that in your file, and I think that that was an interesting one, because it does require collection of a tax on venues within the city. And so I'd call your attention to that, that's a couple of pages of explanation on that. And I believe Mr. Eddy was talking about possibly putting that on the budget, I mean, on the ballot for the March ballot, the March election. The other thing we talked about was consolidation of services with other cities, which Tom has already talked about with police, fire, and dispatch, and a true hiring freeze, which Sharon has also talked about, and a review of the police and fire structure in the budgets. The other item that took a lot of our time was discussing the possible things that could happen with the wastewater treatment plant. And since we've not been privy to those negotiations, we don't know what the funds are that will be coming, if there is a sale, what is going to be do, what is going to be done with those monies? And it would be our strong recommendation that any monies coming, if there is a sale from the wastewater treatment plant, be put in a restricted fund. Where we're going from here, and what we see is where we need to go as a committee, and where the task force needs to go, is to really do an analysis of what we have in our city, and then continue our search as those three great suggestions from the employees tonight, I'd like to have them on my committee, if that's possible, to really study what other cities are doing, and study what we have in our fees. And we want to focus on the opportunities for increased revenues while avoiding any major tax increases that will directly affect the citizens, or impact the citizens of Palm Springs.
Okay, now, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. I would suggest that if there's any members of the public that would like a copy of the report, they can get it here at City Hall, or through the Palm Springs Economic Development Corporation. And if we can answer, if we can answer any questions for you now, not only our subcommittee chairs, but the members of our task force are available.
Very good, thank you, John. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Yes, I have a question regarding the cities that you used in comparison. Did you all use the same cities, and what criteria did you use in determining the cities of comparison?
Well, actually, we went back to the old report that you had, Anderson, and looked at some of those cities, but really what we did for your information was we went through just a collection of what other cities are doing, and saying, if you want us to continue down this road, we'd be happy to get into that kind of definition. But this was just a broad base to say, hey, you know, Anaheim's about this size, and this is what they're doing. Apple Valley is about this size, and this is what they're doing, which is contained back in the appendix under employee benefits. It was just, it was just general information, Mr. Oden, so that you could see what directions other cities were moving. But to get into that kind of time span of doing that, obviously, I think you paid $50,000 for that the last time you did it. We certainly didn't have the time in this timeframe to do something that detailed.
Thank you. I'm glad you took advantage of what we've paid for. Sharon, would you describe for me in a little greater detail the role and function of this consultant?
Well, when looking at some of the other cities, we've, and going through many websites that all of us did, we found that there are consultants that are actually retired fire chiefs, police chiefs, financial people, that understand, and they have a track record with other cities that have used them to come in and be part of a negotiating team. Not actually to the negotiations, but keep people that you might give direction to that are negotiating, saying, whoa, whoa, you know, you have to have three firemen respond to a fire, because it's unsafe to have one, or you need three kind of, you need three fire people on a certain type of truck, is to give that expertise that unless you're involved in the day-to-day, that you don't understand, and you simply don't have that experience to know that.
Tom, did you have the opportunity, when we were discussing transport for, to the hospital, did he want, look at the amount of revenue that potentially might be generated if we were able to do that?
Actually, one of my good friends is a commander battalion up in Tacoma. They bring in over, a little bit over $3 million. Now, Tacoma is a bigger city than ours is. I'm guessing probably we could be generating, from just talking, maybe about half a million dollars or so. Now, at the same time, when I talk to the fire chief, I'm thinking, trying to remember at the top of my head, I believe he estimated it would cost us about half a million to retrofit our fire vehicles to transport patients. So basically, about the first year would be a wash for the cost of retrofit versus the cost of us transporting patients.
Okay.
But we don't know that yet.
No.
We don't know that for sure.
At present, the law has to be changed before we could transport anyway.
Right.
First of all, I would like to thank all of you who worked on this. I know certainly there are a lot of other questions, and this is a preliminary report, but for the time, effort, and energy that you put forth to bring us this information. And I know that we have some difficult and challenging decisions to make ahead, but I know that we requested this information. It was important to me to receive at least this preliminary report from you, because of the decisions that we will have to make in the short term. So I just want to take this opportunity, not only you at the table, but all of you who participated on this budget task force, thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Other comments, questions? I'm going to throw in my appreciation for the work you've done. There are many things here that we have looked at, at least as long as I've been on council, but I've never seen them all compiled into one report as comprehensively as you've all done, and I appreciate that information. A lot of effort here, I know that, because I've watched what you've been doing for the past six months. On the revenue generating analysis, and if you look at our current revenue sources, we talked about a little bit earlier when Tom was doing his budget projections and such. Our difficulty is trying to keep trend and keep track with our expense sides, which in some cases, as you did by your own analysis, are much higher. If you took all that you're offering here as possible recommendations, admission tax or transport, which requires obviously some legal changes and so on, legislative changes, all of that would generate some degree of money, but it seems like we're kind of taxing everywhere. You know, wherever you go, you're hitting them with a tax. You increase the franchise fees, you get an admissions tax, you get a, you know, transfer tax, 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 tax. Is there analysis done at your level that said, look, as opposed to doing a myriad of little taxes all over, just bite the bullet and suggest to the residents that we have to change this tax structure, so that we just acknowledge that in order to maintain the quality of life that we all demand, it costs more? And in order to do that, we recommend that we take this current revenue stream and increase that percentage. Has that been looked at, as opposed to all the other, you know, opportunities?
One of the things that we talked about in our committee was the recent citizen survey that was done. And the citizen survey that was done had a whole list of questions that it asked the citizens about, would you, how would you feel about a reduction in this, police service, leisure services, all that? But the question that wasn't attached to it, and we felt that was a real loss on that survey, was what would you be willing to pay additional monies for? And that, I think, we have to go out to the citizens, because we say in this report that you have, you have two things to do. You have to increase revenue and cut expenses, and that's the only two choices. You know, what we, what we did was not brain surgery, we just looked at it and said that's what needs to be done. And so there, we see a lot of areas that expenses can be cut, and we think that your department's heads probably see those areas, too.
You know, we have so many more houses being built, a lot of rooftops going on in Palm Springs, measured in thousands, not hundreds, but thousands of new rooftops. With that comes higher demands for services across the board. Did you look at the idea of assessing, as each permit is pulled, some dollar amount, as they do with schools and so on and so forth, that you pay more for, and then fill in the blank, you pay more for police, you pay more for fire? Is it an increase that's a one-time assessment? Is it an ongoing assessment that's there annually? Has that been analyzed and looked at?
We looked at special assessment districts. We, we felt that we, that by adding additional fees upfront, the developer and the builder does not pay for them, they get paid for, passed on to the homeowner and to the home purchaser. And if you try and go and buy a house in Palm Springs now, we're pricing ourselves pretty high. And to add additional fees to make prices even higher on homes, we felt that we needed to look at everything else before we suggested that.
Real estate's still brisk, property's still moving. In fact, in many cases, before they even pour the slab, the property could in fact be sold several times over. I mean, from the time they pull permit to the time they actually give you the key to the home, there may have been a number of sales already. So that the assessment is already absorbed in the first sale, and picked up in the second and transferred to the third, so that in some respects, at least today, in these current real estate trends, where real estate is so high, those incremental assessments that we place, miners they may be on the front end, are basically absorbed very quickly by the transfer and sale to the second and third potential homeowner. And regardless of what you start a project with, as we've seen so many of the projects in Palm Springs, they start with a sign out front, coming soon condos or single-family homes, and they put a price tag. Before they finish the construction, they've painted over it and added a higher price, because the market will command it, it'll demand it, and they'll pay it. So again, I think that while things are brisk, I just wonder if we should be trying to harvest more.
Well, I think there's another aspect to this, too, because it's the equitable distribution of expenses, especially in the public safety area, because we do have a large tourist segment of our community. And so I think as we look at these, some of these fees, we need to see what the tourist pays versus what the resident pays, because I think we benefit from our tourist industry. And if the residents are paying all the public safety costs for everybody, I'm not sure that's an equitable thing. But I think you could put the two together, and an admissions tax might take part of that, and you might do the assessment and kind of combine them as opposed to doing one or the other.
On the issue of franchise, one of the neighboring cities had an issue on franchise fees on one of the services provided, and it became relatively controversial, I think three or four years ago, to where there was an outcry on the increase in franchise fees. Do you have any pulses to the reaction to franchise fee changes, increases?
Well, as I said earlier, we haven't had the opportunity yet with that particular item to really do an analysis, and that's our next step, is now that we've investigated, we've suggested, now the next step for that committee is to look at and to do an analysis of what our fees are. Can they be increased? When can they be increased? Because many of these are under contract. But if you're charging franchise fees for your taxi companies, are we charging it for the cable companies? These are not fees that are charged to the general public, but they're fees on companies that use our roadways. And so that's a second step of where this committee needs to go.
Okay.
And I might suggest, as you have a chance to look at this, that it might be appropriate in the next month or six weeks, that we sit down again in a study session and maybe talk about some of these items, give direction to the budget task force, maybe a little bit more specific on what would be of interest to look at, what to follow through on and come back with, maybe more information and more specifics, which we don't have in this first report.
John, one of your members, I think, wants to make comment that's not at the table. Do you allow that to happen as the chairman?
We'll let that happen.
We'll let that happen.
I don't want to say no to her, I mean, you might.
No, 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 I've tried, that doesn't work.
I just wanted to clarify that the two sections, the first two sections, the employee benefits and the contract services, were in front of the entire committee. The revenue enhancement was not, and so many of the things that Ginny's talking about, she's researched, but we have not talked about.
Oh, I see.
And has not been brought to the committee. And her report, she wasn't there to present it, so we did not move it forward. So a lot of the things she has, but we haven't talked about.
So it's work in progress?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, Mr. Lappam, who's a member of the Revenue Enhancement Subcommittee, has asked that these, this minority report that he has prepared be entered into the record as his report from the Subcommittee, as it relates to the information that they presented. So I'd like to pass it on.
While you're passing it, and I'd like to make an offer, my committee, I believe, is here.
Howard Lappam.
Benefits are an extremely tricky area, and I know there's a lot of data here, and if anybody on the council, or you, Mr. Mayor, would like to sit down with any of us individually or as a committee, to answer your questions, we would certainly entertain that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Now, if I could comment on the franchise tax, it is controversial, but yet at the same time, last election, we had the utility taxes up before the citizens, and the citizens did pass the renewal of the utility tax. I think if things are explained to the citizens, that things are not quite as controversial once they realize that they have to pay for the services, which they have. The next issue, for instance, is medical. One of the Cove communities with their ambulance service did do an assessment for their citizens on their taxes, so they get better ambulance service. Right now, we have our police department response within five minutes. I believe it's nine minutes for the ambulance service, and so you would talk to the citizens. Would you rather have our fire department be there within five minutes, or wait an extra four minutes when you're having a heart attack? How much is it worth for you to have that extra quality that we spend this money on having our fire department? Once things are properly explained to people, I think a lot of times, they do understand and realize that you have to pay the cost money to provide these services, and they may indeed pay for a special real estate tax assessment to provide that high quality that we have for public safety.
I would suggest that part of the perception of the council in establishing this task force was to help us educate the community, that we felt that if citizens were to do the analysis, and citizens were to make findings, much as you have, it would not be the council trying to say, it costs more, spend more money, give us more taxes. It'd be the citizens saying, by your analysis, unbiased as you are, it says, after your careful analysis of six and eight months and thorough investigation, these are the findings. And part of that education you referred to was part of what we had hoped that you would help us do, that we didn't feel as though it's just us, because sometimes we're perceived as sort of, you know, taking care of our own, we're just selling our own ideas. So we have not hampered you, nor directed you. You've had the free and independent ability to study anything you wished. Staff, I think, has been extremely helpful. Mr. Eddy's office has been very good at giving you the data on a timely and factual basis, and your findings, I think, are intriguing, at least on the first blush, that there's a lot of opportunities that I think do require additional analysis, and part of the education component. How you educate the community, though, is still to be discussed. I know your meetings are televised, I know people do watch that with interest, so I think that there's an opportunity to continue the work you're doing to further educate the community as to how we can be a better city, and at some cost, perhaps, that we can't currently afford. And what does that mean? Because we went through our budget analysis, but I think people are more intrigued hearing from all of you what your findings were, and I appreciate you doing that tonight. Okay? Anything else, counsel? Keep working. Don't go home tonight, go back to the office, keep working. Very good. Anything else on this, counsel? Mr. Eddy, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, that completes our agenda for tonight. See no further business.
Do you want to make the announcement about Carl?
Oh, you can do that. Mr. Oden. We have an announcement for Mr. Oden, one of our, one of our more prestigious members of our community passed away recently, Mr. Carl Proud. Mr. Oden?
Yes, and funeral services will be held at the Wellwood...
Wellwood Murray.
Murray Cemetery on Friday...
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Yes.
And he was very active in our, in our community, on our historic site preservation board, worked with lots of organizations within, in the community, historic and cultural. He was a historian and a very loved member of... He was a historian and a very loved member of our community.
Very good. All right, with that, it's now 9:30, seeing no further business before the council. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you, and good night.